Good morning, everyone. Welcome to a special meeting of the Seattle's City of Seattle Sustainability and Transportation Committee. My name is Mike O'Brien. I'm chair of this committee. This is a special meeting that we're convening to talk about the West Seattle Ballard Link section of the -- and we are the elected leaders group for that. Today is Friday, February 1st, 2019. It's about 9:35 a.m. And I'm going to hand it off to my co-chair of the elected leadership group, Joe McDermott.
Good morning. Thank you, Mike. I want to welcome everyone to the fifth elected leaders group meeting for Sound Transit's West Hill and Ballard Link Light Rail extensions. This group includes a select group of Sound Transit Board members, Seattle City Council members, Port of Seattle, and happens to be a special meeting, as Councilmember O'Brien has pointed out, of the City Council's Sustainability and Transportation Committee. I'm Joe McDermott with the King County Council, co-chairing with Mike O'Brien. And for over a year, it doesn't seem like over a year already, but for over a year, we have been meeting to develop recommendations to the Sound Transit Board regarding alignment alternatives with the most promised community support and feasibility. We kicked off the process with early scoping at the beginning of last year, where Sound Transit collected several ideas from agencies, communities, and individuals about what they would like to see Sound Transit study for the coming phases of the project. Throughout the process, input from engaged parties has informed what the engineers and planners have studied and evaluated during the alternative development process. We are getting closer to making those recommendations on what to study further in the Environmental Impact Statement, or EIS, phase, which starts later this year. A lot more work has gone into getting us to this point, but there is even more work to do as we prepare for scoping, which is a critical period for public comment. When Sound Transit gets approval from the federal government, this project will enter a scoping period, perhaps as early as this month. And it is vital that the community members weigh in during that 30-day period, even if you have already provided comments before. Sound Transit will gather all of the comments, which will then help us make our final recommendation. We will not be making any recommendations or formal decisions today. This meeting is an opportunity for us to hear directly from you, the public, and learn about recent and upcoming community engagement activities, and also more information and review about the Level 3 alternatives, and review the further analysis that Sound Transit staff has been conducting. I'm eager to dig into the details with all of you, but first, I'll turn it over for more introduction from Councilmember O'Brien.
Thank you, Councilmember McDermott. I want to take a minute just to reiterate this critical phase we're entering. It's a really important time in the phasing of this project, as we enter the scoping period to gather additional input on the work that's been done thus far. And so, as Councilmember McDermott said, it's really important for organizations, people of the public, to be putting their comments into that scoping period to help shape what happens next. There'll be many ways to engage in that period. We're going to have open houses, community workshops, an online open house. You can do it through emails and through phone messages, but we want to hear from folks during this period. As we continue to gather input from communities and agencies, we'll continue to weigh the opportunities and challenges of the alternatives and make recommendations on what to carry forward through the Environmental Impact Statement. I want to thank all the folks who have gotten involved so far. It's been reassuring to see so many communities engage deeply in these decisions that are going to have a long-lasting impact on our city and our region. I want to thank the members of the Stakeholder Advisory Group, who have spent many hours with Sound Transit staff and out in communities, asking tough questions and helping shape this project and the work we do here as the elected leadership group. I also want to highlight the important work that the city and Sound Transit have done together through the Racial Equity Toolkit. I'm a big supporter of Racial Equity Toolkits on projects like this, and the outcomes that we're moving towards, such as enhancing mobility and access for communities of color and low-income populations, creating opportunities for equitable development that benefit communities of color, avoiding disproportionate impacts on communities of color and low-income populations, and meaningfully involving communities of color and low-income populations in this project. There's a lot more work to be done. I'm proud of where we are today, and I look forward to the continuing work on that Racial Equity Toolkit as we move forward. Now, I'd like to hand it over to Don Billen, who's the Director of Sound Transit, Planning, Environment, and Project Development, for a few more words. Don.
Thank you, Councilmember. And on behalf of Peter Rogoff, I'd just like to welcome this esteemed group of elected officials, and thank you for your efforts to help Sound Transit fulfill its mission, which is to connect more people to more places. Your engagement has been key to narrowing alternatives and maximizing alternatives based on your values and community input. Sound Transit is very thankful of the time and energy that you've put into this process to truly understand the cost, benefits, and trade-offs of the alternatives that we are evaluating. Working collaboratively with leadership on the ground helps us identify and address issues early, heading off any future delays, and making it possible to meet the schedule approved in ST3. Many thanks for your time and great thinking on connecting more people to more places.
Thank you, Don. The next item on the agenda is public comment. I have eight folks signed up, so I'll call you in batches, and you can come on up to the mic. You'll have up to two minutes to make public comment. Alex Zimmerman, you're going to be first, followed by Mark Knutson, and then Dennis Nolan.
Hi, my lovely, 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 very lovely Dory Fuhrer. My name is Alex Zimmerman. Why are you talking about this minority? It's fascism. It's very interesting kind of fascism. You mentioned minority, but $100 billion in Sound Transit, but it's got a corporation and fat cat, and you, you not mention this. What is you talking about minority? You talk about 5% people who will drive Sound Transit train, or 95% people who drive car. It's very interesting kinds of crook, what is I see here for many years. And right now, I speak to everybody who listen to me. We need clean this dirty chamber from this bandito, from these criminals, because they represent a, what is I call Nazi social democratic mafia. No one from them against Sound Transit. Never one I hear one voice. Everybody, everybody under agenda, what is have this Nazi social democratic mafia. They are Nazi. He represent only small group of people. It's exactly what has happened. It is exactly what is I speak right now. So, please, everybody, in exactly the 700,000 emerald degenerate idiot who live in Seattle cannot understand, it will cost us $100 billion when we need 250,000 apartment for low income, when 50% people in low income right now. We pay for everything, this 50% too. No 5% pay for this. So, right now, I speak to everybody. Stand up, America. Stand up, Seattle. Clean this dirty chamber from this Nazi. Thank you.
Mark Knutson's next. You have our attention, Mark.
Yeah, good thing. Yeah, good morning. Thanks. I'm Mark Knutson, representing SSA Marine, one of the major terminal operating companies. We're headquartered in Harbor Island. And we're in the unique position where the north alignment goes through a container terminal that we operate, and the south alignment goes through our headquarters. But it was important, I think, as we look at this, it's hard for us to give you an advised position right now with the lack of information and as a design evolves, but it's very important to us to make sure that the container terminal efficiency and transportation flows to the terminal stay intact. It's critical to the access to the gateway. Congestion at our terminals leads to cargo moving to other locations. We've been fortunate with the Northwest Seaport Alliance to rebuild cargoes in Seattle, and you follow the news as that has happened. So, it's critically important for us that that, as the alignment, if it's the north alignment that you choose, that we work on designs that make that be effective for us and improve the transportation flows. But it's critically important that, as you look at your alignment choice, you pay attention to the container activities. The two container terminals in Seattle, Terminal 5 and Terminal 18, that are impacted by this, are both around 200-acre terminals. That's the size we need for terminals, for the ships that we have in today's environment. Those are not replaceable. Those are critical pieces of infrastructure that we have in Seattle. So, I just urge you to really look at the transportation impacts. We'd like to see an opportunity where both the mass transit improvement is made, for all the various reasons that that's logical, and also improvements to our transportation infrastructure. Maritime office-related buildings like our headquarters, they can be moved. We're happy where we are, but they can be moved and relocated. They don't need to be water-dependent. Container terminals are, and we urge you to pay a lot of attention to our container terminal transportation flow as you do your analysis. There you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I really appreciate your engaging in this process. Look forward to scoping comments, and obviously, we're going to learn a lot more as we go through the EIS. We'll want to make sure that we're having those conversations. Thank you.
Real good. Thank you.
Dennis, Dennis Nolan's going to be followed by Marguerite Richard, and then Kathleen Johnson.
Good morning. Thanks for having me, Dennis Nolan. And Sound Transit is planning track routing in a Delridge Light Rail station that will directly impact many of 90-plus homes located in two square blocks of Youngstown. What's particularly disappointing is that the planning has progressed along as far as it has without, until very recently, direct impact from residents of this neighborhood. This community of homes is an outstanding example of what Seattle professes it wants: diversity of incomes, ethnicities, ages, lifestyles, families with young children, retirees, and multi-generational households; mixed and affordable housing, easy access to the city core, increasing density, proximity to transit. It's craziness, in my opinion, that this neighborhood's heart and soul and profound sense of community will be wiped out. We are more than a line on a map. These are real people. This neighborhood is a neighborhood that Light Rail was designed to serve. Before decisions are made, please reconsider every option. Get creative. Find ways to minimize the impacts of light rail construction on this neighborhood. The question is, how can we preserve this neighborhood and accommodate the needs of Light Rail? To answer this, we need feet on the ground, and we need your feet on the ground. Councilmembers McDermott and Herbald have walked the neighborhood with me and met neighbors. Executive Constantine has agreed to walk the neighborhood. I invite all of you to walk the neighborhood with me. I'll reach out to schedule. The Youngstown neighborhood, what I speak is between southwest Dakota, southwest Genesee Streets, between Delridge and 26 Southwest. As a point of reference, Delridge Playfield is located at the south end on Genesee, and the DSHS office building is at the north. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. I appreciate your engagement, and you're working directly with folks and really highlighting some important values that we share, so we'll continue to be processing that. Thanks. Marguerite?
Good day, everyone. Welcome to February 1st Black History Month. And I want to speak a little bit about this Race and Social Justice Toolkit in regards to the systematic oppression, repression, depression, and suppression, and how you monitor this room and people that use free speech. Just take myself, for instance. Can't go into City Hall in the municipal tower because of Bruce Harrell. And I don't know if you call it insanity, borderline insanity, that would do such a thing to a black person that's sitting up here making history right now, just because I'm allowed to speak. It's very important that we get opportunity to speak. Speak the truth, you know, like they say, "truth and justice" in the American way. So, I'm having a problem with people talking about training bias as a way to coddle us, to make us think that you're going to do something, you're going to make a change, and you don't do it. And I'm very much concerned about that, because I keep repeating myself, and that's not a good thing. You don't want to keep repeating yourself and doing the same thing like Olympus getting ready to celebrate 100 years. So, 100 years ago, we were talking about race, and we're still there, talking about race. And so, I think that you need to separate yourself from our race, get yourself out of our business, and stop putting people on Sound Transit and other buses to take away our rights and our liberties. And don't tell me I didn't see it, because I saw the other day, these bandits running after, I guess he looked like a homeless man, that couldn't pay his fare. Why do you have a police state on a bus to harm the people, huh? Have you figured that out yet?
Thank you, Marguerite. Kathleen? Kathleen, you're going to be followed by Taylor Huerta and Eugene Wasserman.
Thank you. I'm Kathleen Johnson, and I am the executive director at Historic South Downtown. I'm here representing the people and the businesses in Chinatown International District and Pioneer Square. Like many of the thousands of people who live and work in the neighborhoods around this building, I took Light Rail to work this morning, and we know and we appreciate the complexity and the importance of your work. I am here to ask if the council would consider, the elected leaderships group would consider recommending an extension of the scoping period. I had previously conversed with some of you about delaying it, but I think we're changing that request now to extending it to last through April. Many of you have participated in providing funding sources for our community to build up our capacity so that we can gather information and be as effective as possible in the scoping conversation. We deeply appreciate that. Thank you for your leadership, Councilmember O'Brien. And we want to take maximum effect of that money. By having a little bit more time in the scoping period, we believe we'll be able to do that. So, again, we are asking for an extension of the scoping period to last through the month of April. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathleen. We appreciate the request and share the outcome of wanting to give you as much time to get the thoughtful feedback we want with the scoping period, and we'll continue to work with you and the agency to negotiate and navigate that in the coming weeks. Thanks. Taylor?
Thank you for the opportunity to address you guys. I'll keep my story quick and personal. I live on southwest Dakota Street and 25th, in the neighborhood that Dennis spoke to you guys about. My wife and I have lived in Seattle for 15-plus years, renting in various neighborhoods across the city, and finally achieved our dream of home ownership in January of 2016. Ecstatic to be able to own a home in the city of Seattle in the current market climates, close to downtown, close to our jobs. Owning that house provided the stability that we needed to start our family. We got more than we bargained for in July, when we had twins, so we now have six-month-old twins at home, so stretched pretty thin ourselves. But the current plan being considered by Sound Transit would essentially throw that stability into question, potentially destroying the neighborhood that we live in and the home that we love. We only found out about this around Christmas time, when Dennis came and knocked on our door, so I know you guys have been talking about it for a year and a half, but a large percentage of our neighbors had no idea that this was happening, which is concerning. So, these plans would essentially effectively displace us from the city of Seattle, because we won't be able to purchase a comparable home in a comparable area in the current market. We're going to have to be pushed far outside of Seattle, away from our jobs, away from our relationships. It's going to disrupt our childcare, which obviously is a huge issue for us with two twin infants. So, I guess urging you guys to reconsider options that would not destroy our neighborhood. I know there were options on the table prior to this stage. We've done tunnels in other areas, Beacon Hill. We've proposed tunnels in Avalon. There's tunnels here in downtown. Why not a tunnel through Pigeon Hill? Just looking at us and the cost to lives and families, not just financial costs and not just lines on a map.
Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate your comment. Eugene? Eugene, you're going to be followed by Katie Garrow, and then Jordan Royer.
Hi, I'm Eugene Wasserman. I'm here today for the North Seattle Industrial Association. We represent the maritime and industrial sector along the Lake Washington Canal, Salmon Bay, and Ann Bay. We have spent a lot of time in the last three, four years working on routes and alignments. First of all, I want to thank Sound Transit staff. They've been a great team that have worked with us. They've been very responsive at getting us information, and we applaud their responsiveness to us. We don't always see that from government programs like this, so I want to make that clear. They've really gone out of their way. But we spent a lot of time on this, and it's our conclusion, as well as the Ballard Alliance, that there's only alignment we want to go forward as the preferred alignment in the EIS, and that's with a tunnel under the Ship Canal. Anything else would be destructive of the maritime industry. And the city comprehensive plan is pretty clear about where the city stands on that. So, we expect port and city representatives to back us up on that. The High Level Bridge would be incredibly destructive, as well as the, you know, the drawbridge, which will never get built, because we will make sure the Coast Guard does not allow it, and it probably wouldn't. One of the things that Sound Transit learned from us is the people that control the waterways are not the state, the city, or the county. It's the Coast Guard, and the Coast Guard has specific rules that we know, and fortunately, Sound Transit is starting to learn them. Putting the representative or the elevated forward would mean that some businesses would not do development, because they'll never know what's going to happen. You can't hold business hostage for an EIS process for three years, when you're never going to build them. Moving the representative project just as an academic exercise, we consider a threat to the maritime industry. Thank you.
Thanks, Eugene. Katie?
Good morning, elected leaders. My name is Katie Garrow. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm the deputy director at MLK Labor, representing more than 100,000 unionized workers here in King County. I have provided all of the feedback I'm about to share with you via my role on the Stakeholder Advisory Group, and thank you for the opportunity to serve on that group. I'm here today to express the Labor Council's support for the proposed East-West routes that are located south of Spokane Street for the ST3 expansion to West Seattle. Workers who unload cargo down at Terminal 18, and the ones who wait in long lines of traffic to pick up their containers, tell us that an ST3 line that crosses north of the Spokane Street would have detrimental impacts during construction to their ability to get a container out from the dock and onto the roads. Containers trying to leave T5, which I understand is soon to announce a tenant, would encounter the same problem. I wanted to testify today on this particular issue, because it's personally important to me. One of the reasons that I work in the labor movement and I'm so committed to this work is because I grew up in a place where the economy was garbage, and where dignified work was pretty rare. But we had a port, and young men aspired to be longshoremen. The port withstood the fall of the timber industry in Grace Harbor County, and it's mattered for families like mine. Economies shift and change, but even in Aberdeen, a place that boasts one of the highest unemployment rates in the state, and has for most of my life, has a working port, and that's made a difference. It's kept Aberdeen from being a ghost town. I'm not trying to say that it was great, but we all knew it could be worse. Sometimes it feels like tech, aerospace, and all the cranes will be here forever, but they won't. And we will always need industries like shipping and trade. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Jordan? Jordan's the last one to sign up, so this will be our last public comment.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Jordan Royer, and I represent the Pacific Merchant Shipping Association. We represent marine terminal operators and shipping lines that call the West Coast. Many of you probably know that the past few years, the gateway here of Tacoma and Seattle has lost market share to other ports around the country. We used to be the number-three gateway. We're now the number-four gateway. Part of what we're trying to win back here to this gateway has been, we've been fairly successful in winning some of that cargo back lately, and the Northwest Seaport Alliance has been a big part of that. I must admit, when I first saw the map of the alignment, I had a little shock. You just see the line going right through the terminals. I have been talking to a number of people, and we think there may be some way to make that work. I just urge you all to really think about how easy it is for a shipping line to say, "Well, I'm trying to get to Chicago. I can get there even faster going through Canada, through Prince Rupert, or through the Port of Vancouver, than coming down here or going to LA." So, most of the container traffic that the Port of Seattle gets is that discretionary cargo, that can find all kinds of different ways to get to Chicago. So, I just urge you to think about that. Work with SSA and the port to look at what these options can really work out, because we're in a big fight now. If we don't make this work, we could be in a bigger fight later. And we support transit. It helps get cars off the road. It makes it easier for freight to move. So, we're not anti-transit, but we just think that there's, if there's a way to make this work, it's really important that everybody get together and figure out how to do that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Royer. We are going to move on to the next agenda item, folks. Honorable Michael Fuller, did you want to provide public comment?
Yes.
All right. You have two minutes. We'll take one more public comment.
First and foremost, I thank my God for being here. Black History Month, this is the worst slavery in United States history, I guess, Black Lives Matters. This is not the changes or the dream Black Lives Matters can believe in. Our unfortunate females and males that fought to make this country safe, free, and secure, openly violating Title 8 U.S.C., 1324a, imprentes, I, imprentes, A, imprentes, IV, imprentes, B, imprentes, III, I, I, II, III, IV, II, III, IV, 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 IV, III, 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 IV, 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 W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses, T, in parentheses, W, in parentheses, R, in parentheses, S, in parentheses,[980.12]
...of station design, but it's important feedback that we're collecting as we go along. And of course, we have existing system.
Right, and I recognize that it's a ways out before we're actually going to get to the promised land of telling people which way to go on the train. But I think if we don't continue to incorporate it in these documents and in these conversations, it will get lost in the formulation of those details. And so I just want to reiterate my interest in ensuring that we're thinking about wayfinding, again, through the same lens as accessibility and safety for station design, and that we're including the realities of the rich diversity and different cultures that live within the region. And of course, that includes the language diversity. And these are primarily public transit infrastructures that are being utilized by working-class people who, a lot of times, are immigrants and refugees and who are not comfortable, in part, using public transit because they can't figure out how to read the language that is intended to communicate to people how to use it. So I just really want to emphasize once again that this is a big priority for me.
Mr. Member Turner.
Thank you. Couple of questions following up to the conversation we're having. Mr. Billy, and the concern I heard from the historic South Downtown neighborhood wasn't necessarily more time on the calendar to comment, but given the resources they've recently obtained, they need more, they're asking for more time, length of time, to gather that input, use that expertise, develop that input, and provide it to us. And we're hoping that the comment period might be not just longer with an earlier start, but actually extended to, their ask of me yesterday when I talked to them was actually June. Is that a possi, is there a possibility of the comment period being extended longer later in the calendar? Or do we know yet?
What I'm signaling is that there is risk that if we ask for, go back to FTA to ask for an extension of the comment period, that that is going to add more time to the delay that we've already experienced. I think there are ways, council members, to sit down with that group and talk to them about ensuring that the analysis that they are going to do reaches this body before your recommendation and before the Sound Transit Board takes action in May without necessarily having to modify the federal scoping period. And so that's what we want to problem solve on.
With the same weight and influence as other comments formally provided during the scoping period?
Correct.
Okay. And secondly, regarding the conversation on displacement, you know, obviously from public testimony, the displacement concern we've heard today, and we as members of the EOG have heard specifically, have been around Youngstown, the Del Ridge Station. And Councilmember Herbold and I have made a request in writing of Sound Transit to better understand the gentrification and displacement risks that that action would take. And then kind of flushing out some of those other impacts, bus service further south along the Del Ridge corridor, particularly to communities of color, and the impact and risks and benefits of equitable TOD opportunities created by a Youngstown or a Del Ridge Station. And so I just want to highlight that request and need both to you and to the audience.
Thank you.
Mr. Member Herbold, and then Councilmember Bagshaw.
And just a follow-up on that. I think the additional analysis is really, really important. But as we learned from a recent meeting that we did have at Youngstown with the Del Ridge community, there's also a real interest in additional engagement with the community before this body makes Level 3 recommendations. So looking at some sort of an engagement process similar to what you all have done in the CID, that would be really, really helpful, I think, to this community.
Thank you.
Want to comment?
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. I want to follow up with something that Eugene Wasserman brought up during public comment. And that is, to the extent that we need to give further consideration like we do at Del Ridge, I'm also advocating for, if we don't need further consideration on something, that we reduce the number of alternatives so that we're not spending money reviewing things that the community absolutely does not want. And as an example, around the Ballard leg, the last leg, the, from the beginning, people have said drawbridge is impossible. You know, the predictability is very much in question. Even though it may be $100 million less, it is going to be unacceptable to the community. Similarly, with the idea of having a fixed bridge, it's going to have major impact on the port property and on maritime property. So what I would like to ask as we're going through this today, if you needs to do something because you're trying to measure costs, or you're trying to measure like a 4F, something that Cahill, that you mentioned to me before, I appreciate that, but I think we need to signal to the community that there are certain things that are off the table. Because the predictability around property owners and the numbers that you just gave us is that somewhere between the mid-2022 construction, 2025, that's at least, you know, four to six years that the maritime property owners are going to have to be holding their breath as to what decisions are going to be made. So I really hope today, as we're coming through this, that we can make some decisions to take some things off the table so that both you're not spending your time and energy and money doing that, and the community can have a better sense of what is it we're trying to accomplish. And frankly, from the beginning of this, since, I mean, I think, 2014, when we first started talking to the community, people have been saying, we need that tunnel out there, we don't need another bridge.
Councilmember Bagshaw, thank you for those comments. And I think as we get into kind of the details of the alignment today, we're going to start to see some things coming together. And we'll want to talk a little bit about framing up what the opportunities of this group are. And I just, I'll just want to tee up that, you know, at the end of this phase of the process, not today, but in the next few months, this group will hopefully be making a recommendation to the board on what we think the preferred alignment or preferred alignments should be. And it's entirely possible that we choose to not include certain aspects of this. It may be that the agency, for legal reasons, has to include some things that aren't in our preferred alignment, and maybe the board will choose something different than ours too. But we'll want to understand what flexibility and what our role is moving forward and how that may differ from what ultimately happens. So I think those points are great. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you. I'm going to try to make this quick because I recognize that we're on page eight of a 95-page PowerPoint presentation. But clearly, we are very engaged and interested in these particular issues. And I just wanted to build off of what Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember McDermott have spoken about in terms of gentrification and displacement. And I recognize that their letter is specific to the Del Ridge Station. And sort of in order to fulfill my citywide role, I, my hope is, is that we are engaging in that particular type of analysis for the whole line and that we are taking into consideration both residential and commercial impacts. I know that we have had conversations about those particular concerns and issues along the entire line, and just want to reiterate my request and interest in making sure that that particular analysis is being done for all of the segments and not just one.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. And I do just want to note, so we will be sharing with you another racial equity toolkit memo, and that will include, I think, those key issues that were just mentioned by Councilmember Herbold and McDermott, as well as across the entire line, and then in the Chinatown ID. So you'll have that before making recommendations. Thank you.
Commissioner Bowman.
Great. Just a really quick request of staff. In terms of scoping and getting that information out to the public about how to comment, I would encourage you to be as robust as possible. I do believe there was a little bit of a silver lining, if there, you could say it was, about the federal shutdown, that it's pushed back a little bit, but originally it was supposed to be February 5th. Is that correct?
Fourth, yes, yeah.
Right. I would guess that most of the people that are concerned about this didn't realize that scoping was going to happen next week. And so I think it's just imperative that the agency be very, very robust in their outreach. I don't know if it's billboards on the West Seattle Bridge or whatever it is, but it's got to be really public so people understand how to get their comments in. Thank you.
And Lita, one more question on the scoping. So we, there's some uncertainty about when it's going to start, and we've heard requests about how we can have longer opportunity or to continue to provide feedback. In my opening comments, we talked about open houses and community forums. I'm guessing since we don't know when scoping's starting, those haven't been set yet, but how are those going to be established and how do we communicate with the public on that?
Sure. So our team has been sort of ready to hit send or hit go, but the uncertainty of knowing the timing of the scoping period has made that a little bit difficult. So the second that we do get those scoping dates set, we can set those open houses and neighborhood forum dates and publicize widely. There are a number of different ways that we publicize, from a postcard that goes to properties all along the alignment within, I believe, a half-mile, to sort of a whole sort of strategy for getting ads out there, social media, et cetera, and pushing it out to all of you two to share with your networks and with community organizations to share with their networks. So we will definitely be doing that. We are, we are hoping to get those dates soon so that we can schedule those.
And for folks that are watching or in the audience today, if they want to be notified, I assume there's a website they can go to where these will be updated and maybe an email listserv they can get on?
Yes, actually, if they email wsblink@soundtransit.org, we'll put them on the list and make sure they get updates. And if you do look up West Seattle and Ballard link extensions, our page is there too, which will have it featured the moment they're set.
Right. And I think that, that reality we're facing with the uncertain timing around the federal government creates some uncertainty. You know, we might get notice that it's going to start tomorrow and 30 days, you know, folks might, that might be too short a time for folks to get organized too. And so even without the advanced lead-up, it's going to be a bit of a challenge. So, Dawn, I appreciate, you, I think you understand the challenge, and we want to continue to talk through what the options are there. Shall we move on to the next agenda item?
Yeah.
And colleagues, I want to just suggest, as Councilmember Gonzalez noted, there are a few more pages in here. There's a lot of good information, a lot of it's kind of review. And as we get to about page 77 in the documents, we're going to have an opportunity to go a little deeper on some of the alternatives, which is, I think, is where some of the conversations folks have about pros and cons and costs. And so we're going to get an overview of things, and if you have some specific questions, like clarifications, then that's great. But I would ask that we maybe hold a substantive discussion until we get towards the back end of the presentation, and there will be room for that to happen there.
Page nine, Level 3 screening process. So Lita mentioned the overall process, and as she noted, the scoping period has, you've seen this chart many times, the scoping period has been moved out a little bit. The knock-on effect of that is that we would likely go to you in April to get your recommendations and then to the board in May. That's a little bit later than we'd initially projected. We're at Level 3, as you know. And just looking forward over the next few months, these are the steps that we see coming up. Right now, as you can see, we're presenting the Level 3 evaluation results. We presented them to our Stakeholder Advisory Group on Wednesday, and we hope to get those scoping meetings organized in late February, March, to present all of that information to the public more formally. We also, as you know, with the scoping period, it represents the start of the federal environmental review process. It is a formal process under NEPA, which is the National Environmental Policy Act, and it's a 30-day period by law. We do seek feedback from the public during that time on the range of alternatives that we should be looking at. And there's been a lot of work over the last year to define what those alternatives could be, but this is, again, an opportunity for the public to provide comment on what other alternatives or how those alternatives should be refined. The second piece of input we generally look for during the scoping period is what topics we should be studying in the EIS. So if people have specific concerns relating to displacements or traffic or whatever their concern might be in their neighborhood, this is a good opportunity to let us know about that, to ensure that it's looked at in more detail during the EIS process. And then, of course, we seek comment on the purpose and need, which you've seen many times and will see again during the scoping period, and we'll be soliciting feedback on that. All of this information informs what the board decision should be on what it would be in the EIS. And I would also note that, as this is a federal process, the Federal Transit Administration will also have input on the scope of the EIS. As noted earlier, there will be many ways to provide comments, online, open houses, open house neighborhood forums, emails, mails, voice message service. We will get all of that out there as soon as we understand when the scoping period is. Just a note, we will be adding an additional elected leadership group meeting per the request of the co-chairs. Right now, we think that meeting will be on March 29th, and the focus of it will be on the CID station. Then come April, we would return to you to seek the recommendations on what should move forward from this point. As you know, all throughout this year, we've been looking at a lot of alternatives with the intent to screen down to those alternatives that we should look at in more detail in the EIS, looking for a preferred alternative in particular. There has been a lot of interest in additional project elements, tunnels and so on. These elements, as you understand, would require additional funding. So we're asking the Stakeholder Advisory Group and the elected leadership group to identify two preferred alternatives. Preferred alternative number one would be if third-party funding were not to be secured. And then preferred alternative two would be in the event that third-party funding is secured. So that will allow some additional time to look at those avenues for potential additional funding. We continue to look at these alternatives in the EIS process while that, while that funding situation becomes more clear. So we, before you make your recommendations in April, as we've noted, you will have all of the evaluation results, you will have all of the public feedback, and you'll have all of the input from the RED process before you need to make your recommendations. The last step, of course, is for the Sound Transit Board, first through the System Expansion Committee and then through the full board, to consider all of the recommendations and public feedback and technical analysis, and then identify the preferred alternative and other alternatives to look at in the EIS. And we expect that would occur in May. So just to briefly remind you about the Level 3 alternatives, you've seen this information before, so I'll move very quickly through these slides. We have three Level 3 alternatives. The ST3 representative project, alternative that we call West Seattle Elevated, CID 5th, Downtown 6th, and Ballard Elevated. It has a couple of design options in the Chinatown ID, a cut-and-cover and a mine station option. And then a third alternative, that is the West Seattle Tunnel, CID 4th, Downtown 5th, and Ballard Tunnel. It too has design options in the Alaska Junction area, in Chinatown ID, and in Ballard. First of all, the representative project, you've seen it many times. I won't spend additional time here describing it. It's the same alternative that was included in the ST3 plan and that we've been looking at throughout this year. The second alternative is shown on this overview map. I'll just refer to it as the yellow-brown alternative. In the Alaska Junction area, how it's different?
Councilmember Herbold has a question.
Thank you. Before we get too much further, I do have a process question. You had mentioned that the request is for this body to make two preferred alternative recommendations, one if a third-party funding is secured and one if it is not. But help me understand, the Sound Transit Board itself will take that input of the two different preferred alternatives, but it will pick one, is that correct?
Right now, I don't want to speak for the board, but we want to present them with the option, and they, at their discretion, could choose to carry both preferred alternatives through the EIS process.
It's, I think it's important to get some early indication from the board on this because if they, their preference is not to, that gives folks basically a month to, between April and May, to have those conversations about third-party funding. So I think it would be really helpful for us to know more about what the board is thinking in that, in that area.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you. I just, I know that we're not making any decisions today, and so I'm going to sit here and just listen to the information, but I just wanted to, once again, fulfill my obligation of disclosing that I have a conflict of interest as it relates to the West Seattle aspects of the alignment conversation that we're having because one of, because my property would be one of the properties impacted in the Alaska Junction. So I'm just disclosing that. I'm going to continue to sit here and listen, but I won't be engaging too much in this portion of the conversation.
And I think that question about intent of the board and what's going forward is a, is a good one for us to continue to explore. I mean, we will not be able to bind the board. We do have four board members with us today, and Mayor Durkin is part of this group who's not able to attend today. And so that'll be an opportunity to get some feedback and through our other networks, we can have some conversations. Executive Summers, would you like to comment on that at all?
From my perspective, the critical part of this that we'll need to see is, is this alternative funding real? You know, what, is there a pathway to that? Because if it's not real, the rest of the system can't afford some of the enhancements that are being proposed. So I would encourage you all to think about putting some sideboards and some flesh to what those, that alternative funding is.
And as another individual board member, I would say we, I see no way we would be prepared, I would be prepared to move forward with a no third-party funding option, not have a third-party funding option move forward through, into and through EIS. But I certainly recognize and share the knowledge that it would have to be, that has to be real funding, that we will not be in a position of funding the more robust, if you will, community preferred alternative from Sound Transit Resources alone.
Councilmember Johnson?
As a way to continue to assuage possible fears, Councilmember Herbold, I not only serve on this elected leadership group, but also on another elected leadership group. And I think it's suffice to say that a common theme amongst the elected leadership groups that are meeting right now to discuss various different alignment decisions, whether that's the Bus Rapid Transit on 522, the Bus Rapid Transit on 405, the Tacoma Hilltop Extension, the Tacoma Link Extension. In every instance, I would hazard a guess that both the community and the elected officials that represent that community have eyes that are bigger than their stomachs, i.e., there is a project list that is greater than the funding that Sound Transit has available to it. And yet, I think in each of those instances, there's a desire by both those elected leaders and their community members to have Sound Transit continue to keep those options available in the event that additional funding does come. In some of those cases, that delta difference is smaller than ours, right? But I do think that there's going to be a lot of additional pressure on the board itself to think about a similar concept to what we're proposing here on a lot of other different elected leadership group discussions as, as those groups come to the Sound Transit Board and ask for some recommendations about what to take through the environmental process. Our, as Councilmember McDermott said, well, our vote is just one on the Sound Transit Board, but I will certainly be making my best effort to convince the rest of my board colleagues that it is prudent for us to bring through at least two alternatives while we await the possibility of additional third-party funding.
With that, with that comment, concern, those, and that dialogue noted that we need to continue that conversation, is it okay if we keep going with Cahill's presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to overview the yellow-brown alternative, the main difference with this alternative is that the orientation of the Alaska Junction Station is in a north-south configuration as opposed to the east-west configuration that was identified in the representative project. Moving into the Del Ridge area, the main difference here is that the Del Ridge Station would be further south than was identified in ST3, and that's based, again, on community feedback that that is a more desirable location. This particular alternative assumes a crossing on the south side of the existing West Seattle Bridge, crossing the Duamish. And then as you get into the Soto area, this alternative would transition into the E3 busway, similar to the representative project. However, it would be at-grade along the E3 busway, not elevated, and it would include vehicle over crossings at both Lander and at Holgate. As you get into the Chinatown ID area, this alternative assumes a bored tunnel, not a cut-and-cover tunnel. So it would be a bored tunnel with a station on 5th Avenue. The station location itself would be cut-and-cover, but the rest of the tunnel, north and south of there, would be bored. As you get into the Midtown area, the assumption is that the alignment right now would be on 6th Avenue, not 5th Avenue, and on Terry Avenue as you go through Denny-Westlake area. And then as you go through South Lake Union and Seattle, this alternative would be on Mercer, so stations at South Lake Union on Mercer and at Seattle Center on Mercer. As you get out into Smith Cove, the station at Smith Cove would be near Gaylor Street, essentially between Gaylor Street and Magnolia Bridge. That's a little further north than the representative project, which assumed the station would be at Prospect in the bottom left of the screen. As you get through Interbay, the station would be on 17th Thorne Dyke area instead of 15th Avenue. And then it would go into a high-level fixed bridge that would be in the 14th Avenue corridor with an elevated station in the vicinity of Market Street. So that's the brown alternative. The third alternative, shown in overview here, I'll refer to as the blue alternative, it is look, it assumes three possible tunnel station locations in the Alaska Junction. So we're looking at tunnel station options on 41st, 42nd, and 44th. In Del Ridge, the station would be further south, and also in this configuration, it would be a bit further west than was identified in the representative project. It assumes a north crossing of the Duamish, so on the north side of the existing West Seattle Bridge. And then again, as you get into Soto, it's the same as the brown alternative. It would get into the E3 busway, but then it would transition to being at-grade with vehicle over crossings at Lander and Holgate. As you get into the Chinatown ID, this assumes a station on 4th Avenue, not on 5th Avenue. And again, we're looking at two possible options here, a cut-and-cover option, which would be a shallow station, and a mine station option, which would be a deep station. This would be on 5th Avenue through the Midtown area, and then on Westlake at the Denny Station area. Through South Lake Union, the assumption is the station would be on Harrison, not Republican, and at Seattle Center, the station would be on Republican. As you get to Smith Cove, this assumes the station would be near Prospect Street, essentially the same location as the representative project had it. And in the Interbay area, it's the same as the brown alternative with a station near 17th and Thorne Dyke. But then the alignment would transition into a tunnel, and we're looking at two possible tunnel station locations, one on 14th Avenue and one on 15th Avenue. So those are the alternatives. Turning to the evaluation results, all the results are based, our analysis is based on the purpose and need, which has remained constant as we've gone through this process. We are using the same evaluation criteria in Level 3 as we used in Level 1 and Level 2, although we are getting progressively more quantitative as we go through the process. We're using the same rating system, so lower performing is shown generally by the red color, higher performing by the green color. We also include cost comparison information in Level 3 for these end-to-end alternatives. I stress, and I've mentioned this before, these are comparative estimates. For the end-to-end alternatives, we are using a consistent methodology. We're using updated 2018 cost data for construction and real estate costs, but this is based on very limited conceptual design. We are very early in the project development process. It does not establish a project budget, and we would not establish a project budget typically until we get much further into final design, somewhere around the 2024 timeframe. These are useful estimates in terms of comparing alternatives at this stage of project development, though. So in terms of the evaluation results, I will not go through this in detail, but I just do want to give you briefly and to the public a brief orientation to how you read this table. It's a two-part table. On the left are listed the evaluation measures. So we've looked at all of these evaluation measures for all of the alternatives. The alternatives are listed across the top. On the left is the representative project in the red-green color. We have the brown alternative, and you'll see there are two design options there because there are design options in the Chinatown ID where you could have a shallow station or a deep station. And in most cases, the ratings are the same for those two alternatives, except you'll see variation in a couple of instances. And then the blue alternative, which includes the tunnels in West Seattle and Ballard, are shown on the right. Again, we've got design options in West Seattle, in the Chinatown ID, and in Ballard, so that's why you have a number of columns there. Generally speaking, the ratings are similar, except in a few cases. It's a two-part page, serious analysis, as said, so this is the second page of that chart. I'd like to dive into this analysis, oh, sorry, question?
Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you. On the second page, the section that deals with residential displacements and potential business displacements, I really appreciated getting the evaluation matrices, matrices that show a little bit more that show a little bit more detail about how you, how you came up with those numbers. And for the residential displacements, for the elevated option, you identify 180 potential residential unit displacements, and for the, the blue line, fewer than 120. So the blue line is, is rating high for minimizing residential displacements as compared to the, the elevated line. Similarly, for the potential business displacements, you've given a total number, but, of square feet, but it would be really helpful to get that broken down by neighborhood if, if we could begin to do that.
Yeah, and I should have pointed that out. These are for the end-to-end alternatives across the entire corridor. So yes, it kind of washes out the data. Some areas of corridor, there could be more displacements, in other areas, there could be very few. The detailed matrices, and that information is available to the public, it's on our website, and people can access it, spells it out more at a segment level, what the specific areas are for all of these measures, so you can really dive into that information. And I'll touch on some of those points as I move through the presentation as well. So going at this, I want to kind of work through the corridor and talk at a more of a segment level about some of the key issues within, or key considerations within those segments. So starting in West Seattle, on the right of this graphic, it shows all of the alternatives that are on the table in West Seattle right now, the red representative project, the yellow alternative, which is elevated, and the blue alternatives, which are tunnel. And on the left, those boxes correspond, the color of those boxes correspond to the color of the alternatives on the right side of the page. So with the representative project, some of the key considerations, and this is some of this information you've heard before in previous levels of analysis, but initially, the initial bullet there speaks to the orientation of the Alaska Junction Station, which complicates a future light rail extension, and also there's a constrained terminal station location on Alaska Street. It would also result in a high guideway along Genesee Street through Delridge. It would have park effects, which may require four avoidance alternatives, and the location of the Delridge Station with the representative project is somewhat problematic because of the proximity to the freeway and to Nucor. With the yellow alternative, which is elevated, it would result in more displacements between the Alaska Junction and Avalon Stations because it would no longer be on Fontalroy, it'd be going through a residential area. It would have similar numbers of displacements in Delridge to the other alternatives. It would result in the greatest disruption to the neighborhood around Alaska Junction. It would also result in a high guideway on Genesee Street, and similar to the representative project, it would have some effects to the West Seattle Golf Course. With the blue alternative, because it's a tunnel, it would have fewer displacements at the Alaska Junction Station area. It would have similar number of displacements in Delridge. It would result in a lower height Delridge Station. The tunnel facilities facilitates a lower guideway along Genesee Street, but a tunnel, of course, as we've talked about, could increase the overall implementation schedule and would require additional funding. It would also have impacts to the park at the portal location. Moving to the Duamish Waterway Crossing.
Councilmember Begshaw?
Cahill, thank you for that. You and I talked about this 4F analysis. Can you talk a little bit about, how real is that? I know that an analysis has to be done, but is it something that's going to stop the project, slow the project? Can we swap property? What is your view on that?
It's a standard process that you need to go through concurrent with the environmental process. Whenever you impact park facilities or recreation areas, you need to assess what the impacts of those would be. You need to study alternatives that would avoid those impacts, and then that becomes a decision about which alternative you should pursue. So it's pretty typical, but it is a process we do need to go through.
Is it something that would add to either the time or the cost of doing your analysis?
It's additional technical work, but it should not affect the overall schedule.
So if you came to the conclusion that a park would be impacted, but we could, there was some other option we could pursue, and let's take the golf course, for example, whether or not we have to purchase some other property or, or figure out an alternative, can we do that parallel to your other decisions? So as an example, in West Seattle, to say, all right, there may be some 4F impacts at Pigeon Point, but if you weigh that against some of the other options, it's something that we could deal with.
Yeah.
So can we do that in a time, in a, in a timely way?
Yes, we would do that concurrent with the rest of the EIS analysis, so that the analysis, the conclusions of the analysis will be available before a decision is made at the end of the EIS process.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Bowman?
Great, thank you. I had a similar question, because I've actually pulled up the website for 4F, so I could understand it a little bit better. And it says that there's, if there is no feasible or prudent avoidance alternative to the use of land, an action includes all possible planning to minimize the harm to the property, et cetera, who makes that determination?
It's, well, this is a federal process, so the FTA would be part of that decision. It's also informed by the local jurisdictions who have jurisdiction as well, so the city of Seattle.
Solely the city of Seattle with the feds?
Both the city of Seattle and the feds.
Okay, and then when it's, and again, I can talk to the attorneys about this later. I just wanted to, I think we should all better understand what a prudent alternative is.
Yeah.
You know, how much does cost come into that?
That's exactly what the EIS analysis, or the 4F analysis is supposed to illuminate. What are all of those issues that should be considered to help make an informed decision? So we need to go through that process, and it'd be available to you to consider.
Thank you. Okay, the ca- I'm sorry, I have-
Councilmember Goddolph, yeah.
Just as, I asked a lot of questions about this 4F thing yesterday when I was getting briefed by staff, and I appreciate you all walking me through the particular requirements of 4F. I just wanted to, and I appreciate Commissioner, your line of questioning, because I think it is important for us to get a better understanding of exactly what the criteria and factors are. I think that impacts very much the deliberation that we're having here about the alignments and the questions around potential impacts, et cetera. I would also add that the state of Washington has its, or the city has its own initiative, Initiative 41, that relates to parkland as well, and a requirement for the city to, to mitigate impacts to open spaces and parks. And so I think that that's also another additional layer for us to make sure that we understand in terms of that framework as it relates to this, to this question that we're discussing.
Thank you, carry on.
With the Duamish Crossing, you can see the alignments on the right side of the screen, the representative project and the yellow alternative, the elevated alternative there are both the same. They both cross to the south of the existing West Seattle Bridge. They both have the same issues with engineering constraints in the Pigeon Point steep slope area, and that is also part of the Duamish Green Belt. With the blue alternative, this would be an elevated alignment on the north side of the West Seattle Bridge. It avoids Pigeon Point steep slope and affects Duamish Green Belt, so that's a positive. But as has been noted earlier in the meeting, it would affect freight port terminal facilities, particularly during construction. As you get into the Soto area, the main issues with the representative project is that right now, the assumption is that it would be elevated, which is more complex and costly. It also does not facilitate track interconnections, which is the ability to move train sets from one line to the other. It would not great-separate the Lander and Holgate roadway crossings, and it also has some infrastructure conflicts with the washout ramps in the vicinity of I-90. The yellow alternative and the blue alternative are both the same in this area. They assume an at-grade track alignment along the E3 busway, which reduces cost and complexity. It also includes great separations at Lander and Holgate, which improve existing light rail and traffic operations. In the Chinatown ID area, the representative project, as we've discussed before, assumes a cut-and-cover tunnel, as well as a cut-and-cover station along Fifth Avenue, which has construction effects in the Chinatown ID. It also affects some washout ramps and has some effect to Ryerson bus space. The brown alternative is different. It would have a cut-and-cover station in the Fifth Avenue area, but it's a bored tunnel, so it would limit the overall construction effects along Fifth Avenue in the Chinatown ID. There is a mine station option with this alternative as well, but that would result in less convenient access transfers and could also potentially extend the overall construction schedule. This alternative, however, does impact potential area where Central Base might expand into. They're currently looking at options to expand the bus base, central bus base, and the area that we're talking about for the tunnel portal for the brown alternative would impact that area. We are coordinating with Metro to better understand their plans and try and coordinate our work. With the blue alternative, this would be a Fourth Avenue alternative. It would require rebuild of the existing Fourth Avenue biuct. Therefore, it has more construction complexity. It would result in traffic diversions while we rebuild Fourth Avenue. It would have potentially delays to the overall schedule, and of course, it would require additional funding. There's also a mine station option on Fourth Avenue in addition to the shallow station option. That would increase the overall traffic effects, because to build that station, you'd have to completely shut down Fourth Avenue for the duration of construction. The station itself would have less convenient access because it's deep, and it would also impact Ryerson Base completely. You'd have to relocate Ryerson Base. They also, also, the mine station does not allow for a pocket track. A pocket track is an area along the alignment where you store trains in the event of you needing additional trains for whatever reason, major events, or because there's a train out of service. And one of the issues with the particular station is that it wouldn't, or that particular type of station is that it would not allow for that pocket track, which reduces overall service operability. Through downtown, the representative project, as we've discussed before, would impact the SR-99 off-ramp in the South Lake Union area. It also requires a large sewer relocation. It has some constraints on right-of-way at the Seattle Center location on Republican. The north tunnel portal location would result in more acquisitions and displacements, and has also infrastructure conflicts with sewer lines under Republican. With the brown alternative, it has limited entrance options for the Midtown Station on Sixth. It has a wider right-of-way, however, at Seattle Center Station, which makes it better or easier to construct. And the north tunnel portal location, where it is, is an area with poor soil condition, so that's a negative with that alternative. The blue alternative on Fifth Avenue would, one of the main features of this alternative is that it would result in higher ridership at the South Lake Union Station on Harrison, because it has better pedestrian access and better bus connections. And I glossed over this earlier, but generally speaking, all of these alignment alternatives, all of these station locations that we're looking at are very, very similar in terms of ridership across the corridor. This is perhaps the only location where there's some potential distinction between the station options. The blue alternative would have a more constrained right-of-way at Seattle Center Station, and the north tunnel portal impacts the southwest Queen Anne Green Belt, and it's a landslide hazard area in that area. Through Smith Cove and Interbay, the representative project, as has been noted before, would affect Elliott and 15th, because it involves columns in the median of that right-of-way. It would have some engineering constraints along the landslide hazard area, which is also the Queen Anne Green Belt. The brown alternative avoids Elliott and 15th altogether. It has some potential impacts to existing infrastructure, and as we've noted elsewhere, it would have some effect to the parks, the Interbay Golf Center, it goes along the edge of it, and the Interbay Athletic Complex, so we'd need to look at 4F issues in those areas. It's much the same issues with the Ballard Tunnel Option, the blue alternative. It avoids Elliott-15th. It has some engineering constraints with the landslide hazard area. It affects the Queen Anne Green Belt, and it has 4F issues. Getting close to the end, Salmon Bay Crossing. The representative project assumes a movable bridge, as we've discussed before, which could potentially interrupt service and would have more in-water effects with the columns. It has the more effects to fishermen's terminal and generally to maritime businesses and vessel navigation. The brown elevated alternative is a fixed bridge, which reduces the in-water effects. It avoids fishermen's terminal, but it does affect other, potentially affect other maritime businesses. The fixed bridge crossing would also require a high-level structure for navigational clearances. So right now, we assume that structure would be in the vicinity of 140 feet or so. The blue alternative, of course, is tunnel, so it would avoid columns in the water, it would avoid maritime and navigational effects, but as we know, it would add costs and require additional funding. Finally, at the Ballard Station location, the green, the Ballard Station on 15th is closer to the center of Ballard. It would result in more acquisitions and displacements, however, with that elevated structure leading to the station and with the tail tracks associated with the station. And as we discussed, the movable bridge has some potential service interruptions. The brown alternative, elevated alternative, would be on 14th. It's a wider right-of-way on 14th, so it would have less displacements, acquisitions associated with it. It is further, however, from the center of the urban village than 15th. However, it would have similar ridership and is potentially better in terms of bus integration. The blue alternative, Ballard Tunnel Alternative, is very similar to the brown alternative in many respects. It's a wider right-of-way on 14th, so it would have less acquisition issues. But 14th is, again, further from the center of the urban village, similar ridership, potentially better at bus integration, and we're also looking at 15th option in that area. So I won't spend time again, but this is just a summary sheet, so if there's one, sorry. Oh, question?
Commissioner?
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I apologize before you just go into that. I had a quick question that just occurred to me on page 67, if you don't mind going back to that. Thank you. I was just curious as to why, on page 66, you list that all of these three different alternatives would require the 4F avoidance alternative, but then on page 67, that's not listed. I'm curious, are you anticipating that?
Yeah, I just noticed that this morning, too. I think that's an oversight on our part. We would need to look at the 4F issues with Pigeon Point as well. I should have noted that.
All right, thank you.
So just, I won't go on, this is just a summary page. It essentially zeros out all of those valuation measures that would be the same across alternatives. So if you're looking for a one-page summary of all of the measures, and you just want to let the information kind of roll over you, it's worth spending some time looking at this chart. Again, areas in red are lower performing, areas in, in green are higher performing, so it gives you a bit of a feel for how the alternatives compare to each other in one page. And also, there's this additional page in your summary booklet that identifies some of the key issues at a segment level, all of that information I've just gone through. So turning to the potential mix and match opportunities, and this is just information for your consideration, as Diane noted, we're not asking you to make any decisions today. This is information that perhaps could help you as you think about how these alternatives could potentially be mixed and matched moving forward. Starting with the yellow-brown alternative, as you described, as you look at this alternative, it's defined in a certain way right now, as I've described it, but it doesn't have to be exactly this way as we move forward. And depending on your recommendations, this alternative could be modified in certain ways to potentially improve it in one respect or another. Some of the key areas that we would note could be looked at more closely include the Duamish Water Crossing area, where right now, it's assumed to be, as shown on the left side of the screen, on the south side of the existing West Seattle Bridge, but it could just as easily, from a design perspective, be located on the north side. There are issues, of course, with that, differentiators, which are listed in the middle of the screen. There are differences in terms of engineering constraints, as we've discussed, differences between the two sides in terms of fish and wildlife effects, differences in terms of property effects, freight movement effects, business commerce effects, and cost. And just to give you a feel for some of those differences, and again, we can go into this in detail as you look at the evaluation package in more detail. But as you look at the key differentiators, again, if you're on the south side, the yellow side, you're affecting, in terms of engineering constraints, you're affecting Pigeon Point steep slope, whereas if you're on the north side, you avoid Pigeon Point steep slope. Again, with the fish and wildlife effects, if you're on the south side, you're affecting the Duamish Green Belt, whereas if you're on the north side, you avoid impacts to the Duamish Green Belt. Property effects, in terms of their magnitude, are very similar in terms of like the raw numbers of properties you would affect. But with the south-side alternative, in terms of freight movement, you would lessen freight and port terminal effects, whereas with the blue alternative on the north side, you would affect freight port terminal, especially during construction. And also with business and commerce effects, you could displace alternatives with, sorry.
Councilmember Begshaw?
Thank you. Before you continue on this, and I appreciate the pros and cons you're looking at here, but we really need the port as a partner. And if one is $300 million more and the port is telling us that's a really bad thing for the port, why would we continue to, besides the 4F issue? Why would we continue to even spend a lot of time on it? What are you going to do about dealing with those, the real freight issues and the economic impact?
That's totally at your discretion, as we said, where this is the analysis for you to consider, and your recommendations could be just that, you know, why should you continue to look at it? It's, it's totally for you to decide as you move forward.
And so, colleagues, well, Cahill, first of all, you've done an amazing job of accelerating us through a lot of information. We're now going to have a few minutes to, on each of these issues to discuss it, and so I do want to invite folks to, again, we're not making decisions here. Again, we're not making decisions here today, but folks have both questions or opinions they want to share about this. And so we can start to get a sense where folks are thinking. That'll be helpful for Councilmember McDermott and I as we move forward, and I think also for staff to get an understanding of what options we want to go forward to. So I appreciate you kicking that off, Councilmember Bagshaw.
Just to complete this page, and you kind of went straight to the key point. But business and commerce effects, obviously, the south side could displace businesses that support trade. That's true of the north side, too. And the north side could also potentially displace some water-dependent businesses. And as noted, the cost, right now, with the cost information, it suggests that the north side is $300 million, potentially more expensive than a south-side crossing within this segment of the project.
And I think here, it's important to highlight why we're in this process. And it's going to be helpful to hear from some of the experts at Sound Transit what makes sense to carry forward or not. A few months ago, when we were looking at these alternatives, the cost differential was $200 million the other direction, so roughly about a $500 million swing. And so the process we go through with your technical experts out there doing soil samples and talking to property owners and looking at specifics around alignment actually does a lot to help us inform our decisions and hearing from other operations that are going to be impacted. And so to the extent that we get to a point where we say, we have enough information now to know that this option is suboptimal on all the metrics we care about, that's great. And to the extent that there are things like, well, there's still a lot of uncertainty around this and we may, as we go forward, we may learn things that make one alignment look really challenging or one better. So having some feedback from the experts on that as, you know, not today a little bit, but in the next couple of months is going to be helpful as we kind of assemble a preferred alternative recommendation. Colleagues, anyone else want to make any comments on these two line, these two alternatives?
Moving to the downtown area, this is another location where you could potentially modify the brown alternative to be more like the blue alternative. As I mentioned, the brown alternative is on Sixth Avenue through downtown and on Mercer through the South Lake Union, Seattle Center area, whereas the blue alternative would be on Fifth through downtown and through the Harrison area and South Lake Union. Some of the key differentiators, of course, it affects the location of the Midtown Station, the South Lake Union Station, Seattle Center Station, and the tunnel portal location, as well as cost differences. Looking...
Councilmember Herbl?
Thank you. And I appreciate you're trying to wrap up the discussion on that one, but sometimes it just takes me a minute to formulate my question. On the Duamish Crossing, since this is in a subject, in a section that we're talking about mixing and matching, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying here. You're saying that we could consider a southern crossing with the blue option within the context of a mixing and matching approach?
Yes. As you think about, as we described, identifying two preferred alternatives, one that is, would not require additional funding and one that would potentially require additional funding, you can use that and other factors to inform what those two alternatives might be. And they could be the same in certain areas if you felt there was no need to look at an alternative further. Looking at the downtown, some of the trade-offs are the key differentiators. With the Midtown Station on Sixth, there would be limited station entrance options, whereas with the location on Fifth Avenue, there would be more station entrance options. With South Lake Union, you have a higher right-of-way cost for the off-street station location with the Mercer alternative. With the Fifth and Harrison alternative, you have higher ridership potential because it has better pedestrian access and bus access. At Seattle Center, with the brown alternative, a good thing about it is that it's a wider right-of-way on Mercer, which makes it easier to construct the station, whereas you've got a more constrained right-of-way in Republican. You'd likely have some property effects outside of the public right-of-way to build that station. At the north tunnel portal, it's located in poor soil conditions for the brown alternative. With the blue alternative, it affects the Queen Anne Green Belt. It's in a landslide hazard area. Again, looking at costs, this is an area where the brown alternative is approximately $400 million more expensive than the blue alternative. So in this case, the blue, the brown alternative is more expensive. If you wanted to reduce the cost of the brown alternative overall, you would mix and match it with the blue alternative in this area.
So Cahill, on this, on this one, the... I'm curious about, from the agency's perspective, is there a sense that it's worthwhile carrying both of these through to continue to study them? Or if, from our position and from the community's perspective, if Fifth Avenue is more optimal on all the metrics we care about and less expensive, would it make sense to narrow that down at this point?
I think from your perspective, from the ELG's perspective, you should focus on what you think is preferred, whatever you think is preferred.
Right.
There may be cases, and we've discussed 4F issues and other legal, technical reasons why we might need to look at additional alternatives in the EIS. They would not necessarily be preferred, but we'd still need to look at them. But you don't need to concern yourself with that necessarily in terms of your recommendations. That's informed by FDA or other considerations.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions on the downtown and South Lake Union? Councilmember Bagshaw?
If I can ask, has anybody heard massive concerns from downtown businesses about whether it's Fifth or Sixth? Because I have not. And whereas I've heard lots from Ballard and lots from the areas we're talking about, about West Seattle, this has been remarkably silent. So if you've heard something, I'd like to know.
The silence continues, Councilmember Bagshaw. No doubt that, you know, when we get down to, you know, which building's going to get, you know, impacted, I'm sure people have differences, but not very much so far.
And Smith Cove, as we discussed, the brown alternative on the left is currently identified to be near Gaylor Street, whereas the blue alternative was near Prospect Street. Some of the key differentiators, obviously, the station location, access is different. There are differences in terms of engineering constraints, differences in terms of impacts on parks, fish and wildlife, property effects are different, and cost. And looking at those more closely, the brown alternative would be west of Elliott Avenue. It would have access to Expedia via the Gaylor Street overpass, whereas the blue alternative is at Prospect Street. It would be east of Elliott Avenue and access to Expedia would be via the Helix Pedestrian Bridge. In terms of engineering constraints, with the brown alternative, the station and the guideway are an area with poor soils. It would also affect the Interbay pump station and a portion of an existing bridge in that area to construct that, look, that particular alignment. The blue alternative, the station and the guideway are in a landslide hazard area, so you'd need to stabilize that slope. In terms of parks, fish and wildlife impacts, the brown alternative avoids the Queen Anne Green Belt, whereas the blue alternative would affect the Green Belt. And in terms of property effects, they're similar. They're different locations, but the overall magnitude of the property effects, the business placement, would be similar either way, either side of the street. And then finally, in terms of cost...
Commissioner?
It's okay. Go ahead, finish your...
The brown alternative is approximately $100 million more than the representative project, whereas the blue alternative is approximately $200 million more.
Just a quick question. Are there any differences in ridership between the blue and the...
None, not really.
No? And then what, can you remind me what that, what you're anticipating for ridership in this area?
Overall...
No, in this area specifically?
Oh, I'd have to, I'd have to look more closely. I could get back to you on that. I don't know...
That'd be great. Thank you.
I'm curious. I want to follow up on that a little bit. In my conversation with staff earlier this week, one of the drivers of ridership, I think, would be Expedia. But my understanding is the access to Expedia from either the brown or the blue line is pretty comparable, depending on maybe where you are within the Expedia complex over there. One of the advantages of the brown alignment is proximity to both the ports' operations there, which may drive some additional ridership and the potential for redevelopment at the Seattle Armory site, which would also be within a walk shed there. But when you say that the riderships are, we're not seeing a difference, is that because the modeling doesn't anticipate future land uses or because at this point it's all noise or because there's other benefits from the Smith Cove location that I'm, or the blue line location that I'm overlooking?
There's just not enough difference in terms of land use and access for it to reflect itself in the model. So we cannot distinguish whether there's a benefit one way or the other, except in that one location that I mentioned in South Lake Union.
Councilmember Johnson?
Cahill, this also feels like one of the few places in the entire system where we could also really have strong bike rail integration. So the difference here between these two station locations does have a noticeable impact about accessibility if you're choosing to ride your bike to the station. When you're adjacent to the regional trail on one side, but you're on the other side of a pretty busy four-way street slash highway, it's got a very different impact. So I'd love to understand a little bit about, better about that differentiation. But as I read this chart, the station to the west gives you better access to that regional trail and is $100 million cheaper. Is that correct?
Correct.
Than the blue alternative?
Than the blue alternative, yes. Yeah.
Van?
With the blue alternative, again, you could do the same mix-and-match exercise that I just described with the brown alternative, but some other additional things to think about. Right now, the blue alternative assumes tunnel stations in West Seattle. You could instead adopt an elevated station option, so essentially swapping the brown for the blue in that area. Some of the key differentiators would be the station location, obviously, would vary, property effects would be different, the guideway height in Delridge would be different, depending on what you do here, and cost would be different. Looking at that more closely, as you look at the station locations, with an elevated station location, with the yellow alternative here on 41st, it would be further away from bus routes on California Avenue. The same is true of a tunnel on 41st, whereas 42nd and 44th would be closer to the bus routes on California. Property effects, with the elevated alternative, you'll see it's broken down into residential and business displacements because you have both in this area. An elevated alternative would have more residential effects than the representative project. It would have fewer business effects because it's avoiding Fontelroy Avenue, whereas the tunnel options are generally better in terms of avoiding residential and business effects across the board, regardless of which tunnel station location. In terms of the guideway height in Delridge, obviously, the yellow alternative would result in a higher guideway height through Delridge, whereas the tunnel alternatives would all result in a lower guideway height. In terms of cost, the tunnel alternatives are generally fairly comparable. They're all about $700 million more than the cost of the representative project through this area.
So Cahill, on the, so I understand the cost analysis and how these other impacts fall into that. So additional residential displacements, if we're doing an elevated through that residential neighborhood, there's obviously cost impacts to that is, and then so if we're doing a tunnel, we would have some savings because we wouldn't be acquiring those properties. Is that incorporated into the $700 million difference?
Yes.
So the tunnel would cost more than 700 to build, but we'd have some savings from fewer property acquisitions?
Yes.
And so the net is 700?
Yes. So this addresses both the savings and the costs. So the net effect is $700 million more.
Councilmember Herbl?
I'm good.
Councilmember Johnson? Okay.
One more question I have. The blue alignment has three different station alternatives. Is the, is the thinking at this point that we would study all three in an EIS? Or are you hoping that this group would prefer one over the other or that the board would prefer one over the other?
It's your choice, but as Councilmember Bagshaw noted, if there's consensus about which is the preferred station location, that's all the better, that we can just get to that point earlier.
Great. Thank you.
Looking in the Soto and Chinatown ID area, this is an area where currently the blue alternative assumes a station on Fourth Avenue. And as we described, we're looking at two options there, a shallow, cut-and-cover option or a deep-mined station option. But you could change the blue alternative to instead have the Chinatown ID station on Fifth Avenue. Again, there's a deep and shallow option there. Some of the key differentiators are the ease of access to the station and passenger transfers, the construction effects in the Chinatown ID, property effects, construction schedule, and cost. And looking at those more closely, in terms of ease of station access, with a brown Fifth Avenue board cut-and-cover option on Fifth Avenue, it's higher performing because the station would be shallower. It's easier to access if it's a shallower station. With the Fifth Avenue board mined option, it would be a deeper station, so it would perform less well in terms of station access and transfers. Fourth Avenue, cut-and-cover, it's a shallow station again, so it's easier to access, whereas the fourth board mined option is a deeper station, again, harder to access, so it's lower performing. In terms of construction effects in the Chinatown ID, the board cut-and-cover option would be on Fifth Avenue. Now, it's not as impactful as the representative project, which is a cut-and-cover tunnel and station, but nevertheless, this would still involve a cut-and-cover station in Fifth Avenue, essentially in the area between Jackson Street and Weller Street, right out here beside us. So, oh, sorry.
Councilmember Bagshaw?
This comes back to a question about why would we keep something on the table? And the deep board mine, either Fourth or Fifth, strikes me as something that we ought to reject, both because of the cost and operating it afterwards. So if you had to take an elevator down with what we anticipate are going to be thousands of riders regularly, doesn't strike me as something we would want to carry forward. So I'd love to hear about why, if it's going to be 500 million more, would we do that? And what I'm hearing from the community is a real desire to connect Union Street Station and the King Street Station with whatever station we end up building here, whether it's Fourth or Fifth. So those are the two areas that I'm continuing to hear concern about. Wonder if you could just address them briefly?
Yes. There's, I think, part of the desire to look at different depths of station was driven in part, as you described, by overall connections in the community. And we will be doing a workshop with the Chinatown ID community during the scoping period where we try and describe some of the trade-offs with all these alternatives, not just in terms of light rail operations, but in terms of connections to the community, impacts to the community, the overall vision for the community. And as we have our next ELG meeting that's entirely focused on the Chinatown ID station, we'll be able to elaborate on some of those, what we learned in terms of our analysis and what we learned in terms of community feedback about that to hopefully inform your thinking before you need to make your recommendations.
Thank you.
In terms of construction effects, I was just describing the construction effects in the Chinatown ID. With the Fifth Avenue board mined option, it would have less construction effects because of the mine station, you would not have as much impact on the surface. The Fourth Avenue cut-and-cover option, this is the option that would require rebuild of the Fourth Avenue viaduct. So there would be, you know, major construction effects and there would be major traffic effects. A lot of the traffic that's on Fourth Avenue would need to be diverted during construction. So it's different because the construction effects are not proximate, are as proximate to the community, but there would be traffic diversions that would affect the communities around this area. And that's true of the fourth board mined option as well. With the fourth board mined option, as I've described before, this would require full closure of Fourth Avenue during the construction period, which would be, we estimate, somewhere in the region of five years or so. Property effects, with the brown option, board cut-and-cover, it would have property effects in Soto at the tunnel portal and along Fifth Avenue and would affect future central base expansion. It does not affect the current central base, but an area that they're proposing to expand into. With the Fifth Avenue board mined option, again, you have those property effects at the tunnel portal in Soto, and again, it affects future central base expansion. With the blue Fourth Avenue cut-and-cover option, you'd have property effects on Fourth Avenue and you'd also have some effect to Ryerson Base. But then finally, with the fourth board mined option, again, you'd have property effects on Fourth Avenue, but with this alternative, you would completely relocate Ryerson Base. You would, you would affect that completely. In terms of construction schedule, the board, Fifth Avenue board cut-and-cover option, the brown alternative on the left does meet the ST3 schedule. With the other alternatives, you have schedule risk, potential schedule delay with those alternatives. And then finally, in terms of cost, the alternative on the left would actually result in some cost savings over the representative project in the vicinity of $200 million. The brown, second brown alternative would be similar cost, whereas the alternatives on Fourth Avenue in blue would be plus $300 million if you do a cut-and-cover station, potentially up to $500 million additional if you do a mined station option.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks. Obviously, we're going to dig into these in a lot more detail when we get together at the end of March, but I want to sort of offer that it's going to take some pretty compelling detail at that meeting for me to want to consider that Fourth Avenue board mined station, given the transfer challenges, the schedule delay challenges, and the cost increases. That just seems to be one of those ones that's not worth continuing. I'm going to reserve the right to change my mind based on what we see in those couple of hours at the end of March, but right now, at first blush, that one doesn't look like it's worth continuing.
Commissioner?
Thank you. I don't need to know this now, but I'd like to understand, maybe just in an email, really, the magnitude between the higher-performing and lower-performing, you know, by magnitude of what? And I always use the Beacon Hill Tunnel as my way of trying to understand the depth of a tunnel and an elevator going down. And maybe you could provide some comparisons to that moving forward. How does the Beacon Hill station compare to maybe how these would compare? Because that is fairly deep.
I can speak quickly, but we can provide you more details certainly. Beacon Hill is, I want to say, about 160 feet, 160 feet deep, whereas this particular option would be about 200 feet deep. So it would be deeper than Beacon Hill for the mine options. And that's true of Fourth or Fifth. But we can give you more examples of other stations and the depth of those stations, too, to help you understand relatively.
Could quickly follow up. Where is the water table on Fourth Avenue? I mean, we're always dealing with that question and...
Yeah. I don't know off the top of my head, but it's not very deep. I know that.
What?
Will be below the water, with a mine station, yes. So...
So colleagues, I want, just to reiterate, we're going to have a dedicated meeting to discuss a lot of the complex issues around Chinatown International District at the end of March. We'll have a couple hours together. But frankly, the work that needs to go into that and for us to make a decision and reach consensus, again, we won't necessarily be making a decision at the end of March, but we'll be just a month away from making a recommendation according to the schedule. And so there's a lot of work that needs to happen between now and then, including all of us, making sure that, you know, we're checking in with folks we're accountable to to have those conversations and understand where they are and what we heard today in public comment, not just about the scoping process, but in general, about making sure that the community has the capacity and the resources to do their analysis and understand what the impacts will be. They're going to be important to me to hear. And there's a natural, I mean, there's a tension here, a couple tensions. I mean, one is cost that I think folks talked about and other impacts on things like Ryerson Base, which are important to figure out. There's a schedule impact, both on how much time do we take to analyze this? You know, we've heard requests today that folks feel like they're being rushed and to really vet this. And so we'll work through that, and hopefully, there's a resolution that can be consistent with the schedule. And there's also pressure, we heard at the very beginning, that folks want to see these projects delivered sooner than our current timeline. And so those are going to push on each other. And our desire to recognize the particular vulnerability and also the strengths of this Chinatown International community and the really direct impacts that these will have on some players in there. And frankly, you know, it was great to hear from SSA Marine earlier, I think, the recognition that, you know, our business office doesn't have to be water-located, we like where it is, but it can be moved. And that's a large operation that has probably been through this elsewhere in their operations and has attorneys on staff to navigate that process, and they're comfortable that, you know, somehow they'll come out of that fine. That's a different perspective than it may have as an immigrant-owned, small restaurant in Chinatown International District where a move could be devastating and how we would analyze that. And so I really want to turn to staff, both at Sound Transit and at the City of Seattle Department of Neighborhoods and SDOT, and our ongoing work to get as much engagement and support of those community members so that when we come back on the 29th, that we can have a robust conversation. And we'll be talking about who's going to be sitting around this table. My expectation is we would have a few community leaders be part of those conversations, too, to help us navigate some of the decisions and the trade-offs we'll be considering. But again, ask folks that are here today to engage directly with folks in the next six weeks, eight weeks. And I'll be providing some resources, too, through that time period to make sure you know that there's, whether they're comment letters or conversations or private meetings to take to understand what some of those concerns are so that we can be as informed as possible with whatever information we get to March 29th.
Can I just do a time check here? It's 11, about 11:25. Can we have your permission to take 15 more minutes because we need to get through Salmon Bay Crossing and Ballard as well?
Diane, as I mentioned yesterday, my next appointment is 4 o'clock.
Lunch is coming in, okay. So, and early dinner, too. Thank you.
Moving to the Salmon Bay and Ballard station. Obviously, the blue alternative right now assumes tunnel station options, and we're looking at two options on 14th and 15th. This could be mixed and matched, if you like, with an elevated, the brown elevated alternative, which is the high-level fixed bridge. And some of the key differentiators, of course, there's different station locations, different effects on water resources, different effects on business and commerce, different property effects and cost. And just to walk through some of those at a high level. In terms of the station location, the fixed bridge crossing, the elevated station at 14th, the brown alternative, would straddle Market Street. It would have similar ridership, but potentially better in terms of bus integration. The tunnel crossing, tunnel station at 14th, so the middle column in blue, also would straddle Market Street. So it's also similar in terms of ridership and potentially better bus integration. On the right, the blue alternative, which is a tunnel station at 15th, would be south of Market Street. It would have similar ridership, and because it's on 15th, it's closer to the center of the urban village. In terms of water resources, the fixed bridge obviously has potential in-water effects, whereas the tunnel alternatives in blue avoid in-water effects. In terms of business and commerce, the brown alternative has potential maritime and freight business effects, as we've described, whereas the tunnel alternatives in blue would avoid those maritime business effects. In terms of property effects, the brown alternative has greater property effects south of Salmon Bay as you rise up to that bridge location. It's an elevated guideway, it's outside of the public right-of-way. It is affecting some businesses. Whereas the tunnel alternatives have fewer property effects, particularly in Ballard, with the cut-and-cover station on 14th, because that would be within the 14th Avenue right-of-way. The tunnel station on 15th, however, would have greater property effects in Ballard because it would be a cut-and-cover station outside of the public right-of-way, would not be within any public right-of-way, would be adjacent to 15th Avenue. Cost differences overall, the fixed bridge in brown would be approximately $100 million more than the representative project, and tunnel alternatives would both be in the vicinity of $350 million more.
Councilmember Bagshaw?
Thank you. I've already spoken about this earlier, how important the tunnel is to maritime businesses and to the port. But I have a question that you said maybe about a half an hour ago that you're asking this group to forward to the Full Sound Transit Board our recommendation, one being what is, that you wouldn't have to ask for additional money, and one that you would. The only option that is on the table that doesn't cost additional money is the bridge, the Baskiel Bridge. And that's an absolutely unacceptable option to everyone that has weighed in on this. So how do we get around that? And maybe I'm asking my colleagues, that the notion of just having a Baskiel Bridge where things are, you know, raising and lowering, you're dealing with freight, you're dealing with unpredictability of schedules, then, just to be able to say, that is just one we don't want to be considering? And I know well and good that that was the representational alignment, but that was never what people in Ballard or people in Magnolia that came to those public hearings before the vote ever agreed to. So I'm looking to you to say, how do we make this work so we're looking at options that are going to be really supported by the community?
To speak to that briefly, we're looking to present an alternative to the Sound Transit Board that, from an end-to-end cost perspective, is comparable to the representative project. So it could be more expensive in certain areas, but have savings in other areas, and overall, potentially similar in scope to the representative project. It's essentially an optimized representative project based on public feedback and all the community enhancements and suggestions that have been made throughout this process. And if it can be cost-compatible with the representative project, then it presents an alternative to the Sound Transit Board that perhaps has elements, like you say, that are different than the representative project.
Councilmember Johnson? I think that brings me, in a very perfect segue, Cahill, to a question. And I'd ask you to go back, if you could, to Slide 74. So Slide 74, while Cahill goes backwards, is the slide that kind of shows all the evaluation measures associated with the three different alternatives that have been put in front of us so far. The ST3 representative project, if you look at the summary of differentiators, is remarkably lower than most of the other alternatives. So what I would love to see staff continue to analyze is, what can we really do to get that brown option to be as close to the cost and schedule without changing the scope of that evaluation, of that option, so that we can eliminate the representative project from consideration? When I look at these three options, what I would love in a perfect world is to be able to see analysis move forward that is comparable in cost and schedule to the representative project, but that performs better than the representative project. And then, a project that may cost a little bit more than that, but does even better in terms of all the other things that we care about. So as we continue to ask you to mix and match here, Cahill, I'd love to have your team come back to us with ideally an option that is not the representative project, but represents the same sort of cost and schedule as the representative project. So we feel like this evolution is taking us to a better place.
So colleagues, as we start to wrap up here, there's a couple places that stood out to me when I looked at here that seems like there's a lower-cost alternative that also meets all of our other priorities, however we choose to rank those. And that would be the crossing of Harbor Island on the south side of Spokane Street Bridge, as opposed to the north, and also through downtown and South Lake Union on Fifth Avenue and Harrison, as opposed to on Sixth Avenue in Mercer. Again, we're not making any decisions today, but it seems like those are two opportunities where there's lower cost and meets or exceeds the needs elsewhere to be considering. The Salmon Bay Crossing, I think, is a similar place where I think a lot of our needs are met with a tunnel and what we've heard today, but the cost differential is still more. And so I think we'll have to consider how we package that or if we need to carry both those through. I think there's also a question of, are there any requirements that we need to do? Or maybe that's beyond the scope of this group, and that's really to you and your lawyers, of, is there a requirement that the representative alignment needs to be part of the EIS to meet other requirements? But I think what you're hearing from a lot of us today is it seems like we've done enough refinements on that representative alignment that there's really not a lot of reason to build anything on that representative line. The good parts of the representative line have been carried through to the other two, and the bad parts, we've kind of aren't interested in going back on. And then there's obviously some other places where there's some larger costs. There's the challenges around Chinatown International District that we're going to spend a lot of time on, and I think that'll be really informative. And then in West Seattle, we know that both in Delridge and up in the junction, there are some options there. And I imagine we're probably going to carry a couple options through both of those to be looking at, too. Councilmember Harold?
Thank you. I hope at least we are demonstrating to the public that we are trying to do this very thoughtfully. And the concerns from industry and the maritime and businesses and residences are certainly resonating with us. And as we look at the alternatives and even a mix-and-match approach, that we take all that into consideration. Again, I press upon the public that we hear their testimony. I guess I do have one, and that's why I didn't want to take anything off the table, even like it's very seductive to take the fourth-board tunnel, the mine, the deep mine, off the table because I think a $400 million cost differential. But at this stage, you know, particularly, we're looking at a mix-and-match approach, it's still all part of the discussion. I have one sort of process question, and that is, of all the testimony I heard, one that really resonated was anyone whose home was about to be taken through the process of the eminent domain process. And I don't know if it's through the EIS process or this scoping process or on the Sound Transit Board, but when we start looking at, we're not going to get out of this without having to claim some property, particularly residents. I don't see a way out of that. So when we look at a relocation package or assistance for that person, that poses just a flat-out, dry eminent domain process. And on the south end, you may recall, we had come up with a mitigation fund, about a $50 million mitigation fund, and we looked at both businesses and residents and the impact. When is the discussion on what that may look like? Particularly for a person that bought a house at a time, and the house is appreciated, and they're pretty rooted in the community, just a flat-out taking, at least in my mind, is not effective, or even just for that matter. So what that whole relocation package may look like, when do those discussions and the process occur? And should they occur now? I'm not really certain.
Well, they are, we are, as I mentioned earlier, already meeting with property owners who think they could potentially be affected. And to be clear, we are obliged to help people find comparable property in the area that, you know, in the event that they need to be displaced. So they would not necessarily be relocated far out of their communities, and we are required to reimburse them the fair market value of their property. But at this point in time, we do not know exactly what those property effects, who exactly we'd be displacing. We have some lines on the map, but no decisions have been made. We will continue to converse with property owners throughout this process and help them understand what their rights are and what the process is and how to engage in it.
So Cahill, I understand that, and I don't mean this in a disrespectful way, but to just buy someone's property at market value, to me, is still not an adequate response. And I think that's a traditional taking. There's incredible costs to still move, whether it's expenses on the loaders and the trucks and relocating your kids to another school. So I'm wondering, and I think we should be a little more creative, as we had to be on the south end of Seattle when we had a mitigation fund for businesses primarily that were relocated. So in this situation, again, I'm hoping that in the discussions at some point, and again, I'm not sure if it's here, and it's just a little food for thought, that we do more than just simply, here's a check for the market value of your house. Because again, in a multi-billion-dollar project, while $40,000 or $50,000 is not a big impact on this, it's a huge impact to the benefit of a person that has just said, hey, you didn't know this was on the radar five years ago, seven years ago, and you rooted in this community, but now you have to go. So there could be a stronger mitigation package than just a flat-out taking.
Okay, understood.
And I think, you know, we heard in public comment today and we've heard in other comments through this process, you know, my hope is that the agency, and I believe you are, is really deeply engaging with folks. And I, you know, the uncertainty around it is also part of the challenge. There may be someone that's ready to relocate right now, but when they go to sell their property, they're going to have to disclose that this property may be taken in a few years, and it may suppress the current value because no one wants to move into the neighborhood with the risk of living through a construction site. So how do we address that? Someone may want to be preparing to remodel their basement to add another unit, but should they spend $50,000, will they get that back if Sound Transit comes through in a couple years and says, hey, we actually need to take your property? And so, you know, I know there's a lot of limits through state law that we can and can't do, but I hope that the agency is both being as transparent as we can. And if there are issues that say, this is unfortunate, to bring them back to this group, whether it's in this format or some other format, so that we can consider the policies and see if there's other ways that we can address some of the real concerns. I think as one of the gentlemen said today in public comment, you know, we're bringing light rail to the exact community we want to serve, you know, and at the same time, we may displace most of them in the process. And so, you know, that's part of the reality when you do a multi-billion-dollar project. You can't do that without touching anything. And we want to be extra sensitive to that. Similarly, with the Chinatown International District, you know, this is a community that could really benefit from the transit investments, and yet, if we don't do it right, they won't be around to benefit from the transit investments.
Thank you, everyone. Cahill, do you need to close up on any part of the presentation?
I think there's just one more slide, and it's just a recap, essentially, of what are the next steps, but just to show you that slide. Just a reminder that we will be doing EIS scoping February, March. We'll come back to you March 29th for an ELG meeting focused on Chinatown ID. And then in April, you would make your recommendations. We'll firm up those dates as soon as we can and let everyone know through every meeting we can what those dates are. And finally, the board decision on what we should move forward with in May.
A quick question, Cahill, as we wrap up. Is there going to be more kind of technical or engineering analysis done between now and the end of March? Or is that largely done at this point, and it's just more about community engagement?
The latter. The work is, for the most part, done, except to the extent that we need to continue the conversation with community members and keep refining based on what they provide us.
Great. I also want to flag and thank Executive Summers. None of these properties touch any of your constituents, but I appreciate your time to be here. And I think part of that is what others have mentioned. We do not just have a responsibility to Fox and Seattle, we have a responsibility to the whole region in this project, and we are not the only elected leadership group that will be going through this process. So we are also, I think there's an expectation that we do the best for the direct communities that are impacted, but also model the behavior that we expect communities throughout the region to be thinking of of these trade-offs. And so they're hard decisions we're going to have to make, and I, Executive Summers, I appreciate you spending as much time as you are with Seattle on this. That's really helpful. The last thing I want to just flag before I hand it off to my colleague, Councilmember McDermott. I'm interested in us having a discussion as we go forward about how this group continues to stay engaged beyond the end of kind of our April or May decisions. There will still be many decisions that will be getting made in the years to come, and I don't know if an elected leadership group needs to continue on. It's largely a city council, so maybe it comes back to the Seattle City Council, but that'll be different in different jurisdictions. And of course, you know, the port and the county have interest here, too. And so want to just flag that we should think about a discussion about, is there a formal arrangement that we carry on through the EIS project or the EIS process and other decisions that get made? Or is there another format that we do?
I want to acknowledge, as I did at the beginning, that we've been at this for over a year already, and for as hard as that is to fathom, we've all invested a lot, and both in our work, but also in work in meetings and conversation with the community. And in many ways, in the next two, three months, we do far more work than we have done over the last year. We have been setting ourselves up to narrow alternatives and gather information, and it is in the coming months that, to do our job well, we have some really difficult decisions that need to be very well-informed by conversation with everybody in the room and more people out in the community. And I look, I expect that to be hard work and challenging in many ways, at many times, but also that the intensity of our work and the amount of our work, I think, will match, if not far exceed, what we've already invested over the last year. And I want to set that expectation and also tell you that how much I look forward to working with everyone in doing that, to have the very best recommendations we can to the board and then to the EIS in going forward, because we all know why we're doing this work, to provide the best transit we possibly can from Ballard to West Seattle and connecting the region. With that?
The Sustainability and Transportation Committee of the Seattle City Council will now be adjourned.